And we're live.
All right. Countdown.
Five, four, three, two, one. Committee on Finance, Tuesday, the fourth of May, 2021. That's Member Wyatt.
Here.
Councilmember Noakowski.
President.
Councilmember Vera.
President.
Councilmember Wingo.
President.
Council President Pridgen. President Scanlon.
President.
Commerce President.
The top.
Item number one, March 2021 cash flow summary report.
Item so.
This item is open, and I believe we have our deputy controller here. I don't see him. Mr. Dow.
He's connecting right now.
Okay.
He's good to go. Restate your question, sir.
Mr. Dow, you have the floor regarding the item number one cash flow summary.
Good morning, your honorable body. Yes, the first item we have is the March 2020, I mean, sorry, March 2021 cash flow report. And just a few bullet items from the cash flow report that we file is. We began the month with a negative 21.7 million. We received almost like 78 million and then dispersed around 32, I'm about to say $33 million. We actually ended the month in a positive 23.6 million for the month of March. At the end of March 31st, 2021, which is a good sign for us, hope you know. Still have a lot more work to do. But just a couple of bullet items for March 2021, actual sales tax receipts. Came in at 8.5 million, which was 500,000 higher than what we projected. 153,000 lower than what we actually received in the month of March of 2020. Property tax, property tax receipts came in at 1.2 million, 298,000 lower than what we projected. And 725,000 lower than what we received in March 2020. The city have received almost 97% of its projected property tax revenue as of March 31st, 2021. State aid, city did receive its March state aid payment of around $59 million. The reason why it was a little higher is that the state did return 24 million on the deferred state aid payments from June 2020 and December of 2020. So that's additional 24 million. That's another reason why our cash finished in a positive for the month of March because mainly due to that state aid deferral payment. And last but not least, basically, we haven't received any additional information on regards to federal stimulus or tribal compact revenue. Any questions from anyone in regards to the March 2021 cash flow report?
Colleagues, any questions? Just a question. The difference in sales tax from the previous year and this year, which you said was about 100 and something thousand dollars. There's a difference between the previous year's sales tax and and this year's. What's the difference?
Oh, I'm sorry, sales tax. Well, we came in at 8.5 million. This is just for the month of March.
Right.
With 153,000 less than March 2020 at the same time.
153,000 dollars less than March 2020, the previous year. Is that money that is that reimbursable under COVID? I mean, it is a loss in sales.
This, when I say it's like sales tax, but like I said, we, we came in at 8.5 million.
Right.
Our, when we projected, we came in, we projected as 500,000 more. But when I look at what I'm saying, March 2021 compared to March 2020, it's just actually, where do we come in at March 2021? Compared to where do we actually come in at March 2020?
Correct.
So it's not as if we lost money, it was more as far as we look at actual to actual year over year.
Right, I understand that. I was just wondering the actuals that we projected and the amount we got the previous year. There is a difference. I'm just wondering if that's something that we can be reimbursed for sales tax. I know it's a projection, I'm just wondering if that's something that we can be reimbursed for.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Asher.
Let me, okay.
Sorry.
Let me, let me cheer to me. Commissioner Astrid, go right ahead.
We are still waiting for the official guidelines on what counts as revenue loss. But that is one of the things we're looking at because we had been on a track, tracking of, you know, an additional 2%, 3% every year. So that was our, one of the items we are looking at, yes.
It would, I mean, it somehow would be, you, you would at least justify it as being COVID related.
Certainly, last year, you know, we got hit for the last six months and this year, you know, we're starting behind a little bit and catching up. So yes, we agree with you and that is one of the items we're looking at.
Right, thank you.
Deputy, can you say, what was the number again that you said regarding the sales, I mean, not sales tax, the property tax? You said we have collected, what percentage?
97%.
97%?
Yes.
Is that, is that unusual or is that what we normally do?
If you, at the cash flow report, as you can see, and even last year, we, even though I know we're going through a pandemic, we're still collecting on whereas individuals are still able to pay their property tax.
Yeah, I would have thought that number would have been a lot less, you know, as it relates to the pandemic, but it's just interesting, the number is that high. I would have never thought that we'd have reached that number during the midst of this pandemic.
Yeah, and if you, even like on a cash flow report, you could see we're projecting to receive at least almost like 143 million, whereas our original goal was 139 million. So we're already almost like 3 million and over than what we projected to receive from property tax.
And as far as the state funding that was held back, Commissioner, are we, did we receive the entire amount or we still have a portion left outstanding?
This Commissioner.
That's what I said, Commissioner.
Yes, we have our June payment, so we will get an additional 19 million in our June payment from what we had originally budgeted.
And then will that be, that will catch us up from?
Yes, it will.
Okay.
Yes, and then going forward, we'll be back at our pre 161 million for next year.
I'm going to ask you a foolish question. Do you see an increase coming from the state?
You know, they, they certainly gave us the deferred amount because they were doing so well. We're not going to see it in this next year, but you know, if it continues to see growth throughout the state, there could be some increase.
Okay. Any updates, and I know that this is not in the cash flow, any updates as it relates to the casino revenues?
I don't know if you saw in the paper, they had that final filing date where they could file for another federal appeal. So that is, I think that was last Friday, so it's 45 days from there, they have to make a decision. So that's where that stands right now.
And the amount that we are totally owed, what is that, that number?
You know, it's a guesstimate, but we're looking at from percentages from prior years, how we calculated it between 30 and 35 million dollars.
That's the total amount, if they were to come out and say, hey, we're going to give you your money and bring you current, it'll be 35 million.
Right, that would take us through, that number calculated was taking us through June of 21.
Okay, now would we be, would that, because you're not including any interest in that amount, but we should interest, correct?
I think that depends on the state and the Senates, how they come to a final agreement.
Okay. Okay, any questions colleagues? Councilmember Noakowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Astrid, do you know how we will be ending this June, coming with cash flow, will be in the positive or negative?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Do you know how we will, are projected of how we will end this year?
Budgetarily or cash flow?
Budgetarily.
Yeah, we'll file the gap next week or we'll file it probably this Thursday for your next meeting. We are looking, I filed the gap, I prepared the gap. I took out the federal stimulus, I left in the casino money and we are at approximately, without the stimulus, $11 million deficit. So using the stimulus, the assumption will be, we'll need approximately 11 million of stimulus to close out the budget. If we do not receive the casino funds, you know, there's 30, 60 days after the close of the year, then we would need to cover that 11 million also. So to be 22 million.
And so, like you said, you know, it's 45 days, we'll get an answer from the federal court, so if that will push us up to June, so by middle of June, we'll know whether or not we're getting that.
We'll have a better feel of it, yes. My, you know, I left it in there, I, you know, we're positive we're going to get it, but when we get it is also the question.
Majority Leader, do you have a question?
Yeah, I was going to ask a question about, we have 45 days for the judge to make a decision or for the casino. The casinos to make some kind of decision within the 45 days. I wasn't clear, was it?
They filed an appeal and then the federal judge has 45 days to make a decision whether they're going to accept that appeal and review it again or deny it.
Okay, so it's 45 days for the judge to make a decision on that. And we, do we know whether or not, if there are any other opportunities for further review after that? I mean, is this it? Is this the end?
I believe this is the final, final.
Okay.
So Commissioner, after this judgment, you're saying that they are compelled, they must pay us?
Yes, that is my understanding from what I have read, yes.
Okay. Any other questions colleagues? Okay, Council President Pridgen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner, if in fact, I mean, we've seen this thing kind of drag out and drag out and for years now, say, you know, we hope it comes, hope it comes. We know that they're at their final appeal. I know that, as you just said, the judge has certain amount of time to make a decision to whether, to allow them to proceed with the appeal. If in fact, the judge does allow them to proceed with the appeal, then we have 11, we'll close out with 11 million dollar deficit, possibly.
If we do not receive the casino, it would be 22.
Okay, so it'd be pretty large, so, and I know we asked this a lot, I'll just keep asking it so we keep it on the, that, do we have a parachute plan?
Well, that would be the federal stimulus money that we had budgeted 65 for.
So.
We would use 22 or 11, depending.
And from some indications, do we have indications without having any guidelines yet that, that we'll be able to use that?
Well, all the things we've talked with our, you know, the senators, as, you know, it's covering your lost revenue, so yes.
Okay.
Definitely.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And when we, when we anticipated to receive that, our first, what is it, tranche or whatever they?
They, President signed on May 10th, he had 60 days, they said 60 days from that, so that would be made 10th or 11th that we would receive money and the guidelines, that would be the outside, so it'll be sometime next week.
Thank you for the question.
Majority Leader.
Yeah, you said that stimulus money would, would cover the cost of lost revenue. Have we total, what lost revenue are? Do we have a guesstimate or an estimate on what lost revenue is?
We have put, you know, different scenarios together depending on, you know, which eligible, which way you calculate it. Do you calculate it as how you ended your ear, year? Do you calculate it versus total lost revenue? So there's kind of a variance in that. So yeah, so we have between 50 and 100 million dollars, you know, different ways of calculating.
Anyone else? Okay, motion to table.
Motion to table.
Seconded by Councilmember Noakowski.
Item number two, Moody's Investors Service, April 2021 City of Buffalo Bond Ratings.
This item is open and our deputy is going to speak on this, Mr. Dow.
Yes, basically, the controller went to the market for the capital bond sale for fiscal year 2021. Part of the process is to have the city rate it. Moody's did a rating and also S&amp;P. We also went to market February 2021 and with the same two agencies and the same rating they provided on our bond refunding sale in February 2021 was the same rating they gave us for our capital general improvement bond sale in April 2021. So both kept our long-term outlook at A+ and A1. And then Moody's kept our, who are current outlook at, I'm sorry, it was at stable. Whereas S&amp;P had, still kept us at a negative outlook. And I love any questions in regards to either one of the ratings agencies for the city.
Yeah. Commissioner Astrid.
Well, I think Deputy Controller Dow should also speak on the percentage that we got when we sold the bonds.
Thank you, Commissioner. A good thing, thank you for bringing that up. And the controller did put out a press statement in regards to the favorable rate in the city did receive. For us to go to market for almost 63 to 64 million, we got an interest rate of 0.83% over our 11-year span. So both agency, we had, I believe, 11 to 12 bidders on the city. So I think, look, for the city from investors, it's a good outlook. And we understand we have the stimulus and we waiting for information on what we can and can't do with stimulus, but in regards for the city to be able to go to the market and get that favorable interest rate. And I know it's a lot of back and forth for who should borrow or who shouldn't, but the city was able to borrow on their own and get a very favorable interest rate for 63, 64 million dollars over 11-year span.
Is that what we agreed to, 64 million? Is that what the council agreed to?
Yes, yeah.
That included the ban from the prior year.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, the ban, we had to finance the ban plus the current.
Okay, yeah, because I was a little confused, I'm like, okay, okay, I got you. Yeah, it's kind of interesting, you know, what Moody's put out and then what S&amp;P, because it seems it's different, two different prisms. You read it and Moody's is one way and then S&amp;P is like totally different. I'm trying to understand and reconcile it too, but at the end of the day, you know, they did look at us positively, but S&amp;P seemed to be more in line with, to my understanding of our city finances and some of the challenges where Moody's didn't seem like that was much of an issue. So it's just interesting how they go about making their arguments, because you would think it'd be similar. But I guess they may, just like a credit bureau, they have two different criterias and how they analyze. So I guess this is one of the ways, it's a little bit different. Because S&amp;P talked about our, our budget and how we've not met our budget, budget revenues. Moody's glossed over it as it wasn't an issue. So, you know, those are things that you just kind of, you know, asked a question like, what are they looking at and, you know, who's making those decisions? Because, you know, it said, S&amp;P said the city has not recently met revenue projections for certain revenues. We talked about the management monitoring performance here, but Moody's didn't say much about that, S&amp;P did. So, interesting. Any questions colleagues? Okay, motion to table.
Motion to table.
Taken by Council President Pridgen.
Item number three. S&amp;P Global Ratings, April 2021 City of Buffalo Bond Ratings.
Deputy, you want to talk about this one again or you already included it in your comments, so you want just?
Yeah, I don't know if this group have any other questions, so I did myself or Greg, but yeah, basically spoke on both at the same time.
Any question colleagues? Okay, motion to table.
Sorry.
Majority Leader, motion to table.
Motion to table.
Seconded by Councilmember Noakowski.
Item number four, Contract Extension, University Emergency Medical Services. During this, as UBM, the emergency medicine.
Items open.
Commissioner Astrid just here to speak on that item.
Sure, this is for Dr. Burke for the fire department and his contract ended in. Oh, were you on, Commissioner? His contract ended in January and they did, you know, due to misunderstanding, they did not get the RFP out until January. They got the responses back in February, he was the only response, so they just completed the contract. It's in the law department now to be approved to form and they're just asking if we could extend the contract to the end of April and then the new contract would be effective May 1st.
Don, it's Commissioner Overnaldo, I'm on the line as well.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No problem.
Okay, Commissioner, Commissioner, what are we, what are we looking at as far as the cost?
The contract contract, a 250,000 dollar range and the extension, the new contract, well, the extension will develop a new contract over the course of the extension. But it's only a 6,000 or increase over the previous contract and that's just a 3% cost of living adjustment.
So it'll be 256, the upcoming contract?
Correct, yes, I'll give you the exact figures when I get back to your office, but yes, only a 6,000 dollar increase over the previous contract.
And what's the term?
We're looking for a long-term contract this time around in the five-year range, but we're, we're still in negotiation phase.
What was, what was the term for this one that we just extended?
This was a five-year, this was the original contract was for five years as well and.
Okay, so you want to keep the, you want to keep the same term?
Yes, that would be my preference, yes.
So do we need, do we need to approve this extension? I'm asking our corporation counsel.
Yes, I think Donna, that we sent it to Melissa Sanchez yesterday to approve the arm and that extension, that 30-day extension, during that 30-day extension, a long-term contract will be put in place.
Well, this is, this is till the 30th, so we're past that date, but you're saying that by the next meeting we'll have, because we're at the 30th and we're past the 30th.
Right, so we need the approval to pay them for those from February, yes.
Okay. Okay, motion, motion to approve. Seconded by Council President Pridgen.
Item number five, Single Source Provider Request, Parkian.
Items open.
Are we supposed to have Commissioner help run?
I am here, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, Commissioner.
Good morning, Mr. Turbin, good morning, honorable members of the Economic Council. I'm asking for your honorable body to approve Designating Bear National, which is Parkian machines, our Parkian pay displays as a single source provider. This is for their backend support service and the software. It's proprietary and as you recall, probably five years ago, we bought a whole bunch of Parkian paying displays that were remanufactured. And now that contract expired and I would like your honorable body to approve us, Parkian is a single source provider. If you do, the next week I can have an item filed before you to amend the contract.
What's the, what's the cost on this?
It's the same cost, we pay $48 per month, per machine for, to Parkian for all the back office support and reports that are provided to us. It enables obviously credit card transactions as well. So there's no cost right now, next week I will provide that item to you with a breakdown of the number of machines and the cost per month, per machine. If I'm allowed to engage them as a single source. I really have no other option, because they are, they're machines and it's proprietary software.
Any questions colleagues? So Commissioner, what we'll do is we'll send this without rec and you'll get us the information?
Sure, I will file something for the next meeting, yes.
Okay, okay.
Motion to stand without recommendation.
Seconded by Councilmember Wingo.
Thank you.
Item number six. Ordinance Amendment, Article 20 Budgeting.
This item's open.
Okay, this item is open and I believe a number of us have had conversation with individuals on the Finance Committee as well as we had our Corporation Counsel advise us on this. I know Councilmember Farrelittle had some concerns that I believe we should have a new item being published, correct? Corporation Counsel?
I'm sorry. We would have a new item published, providing that, I guess, Councilmember Farrelittle gets back to me with some of the things that I sent out yesterday. I sent out a list of, you know, items yesterday where, you know, that dealt with some of his concerns. So once he gives me a final say as to how he feels about them, then I can make the necessary edits and and issue a new or, you know, a reformatted one.
Any other comments colleagues? Councilmember Wingo.
If we could also possibly hold off to receive Councilmember Farrelittle's comments and/or amendments, I've not been included in one conversation regarding this fund balance amendment, ordinance amendment. And I sit as a voting member on the Finance Committee. So I'm asking if we could also delay until I have an opportunity to read through this and see if there's anything that I could contribute since I was not included in these discussions, of which I've asked to be included in these discussions.
Okay, well, you'll have an opportunity during the committee meeting, once we get the item, you'll have it and you can review it and bring forth any of your comments.
As a council member, with all due respect, as a council member, I deserve the same courtesy as you extend the other members of the Finance Committee. Therefore, I'm asking if we could have a conversation offline about this particular item as you've given the opportunity to other council members.
Well, someone will reach out to you, come Majority Leader.
Yeah, and we have the draft copy in front of you that all the council members have to look at and to make comments and recommendations. I think based off that, Farrelittle has suggested some amendments based on the draft copy that he received. And so I asked the council members that they looked at the draft copy and then make some recommendations with regards to some amendments, some changes, some input that you'd like to see as well.
Thank you, Mr. Majority Leader, I am well aware of my ability to view items on the agenda. I'm well aware that there are drafts on this agenda. I am specifically asking to sit and speak with the Chair of the Finance Committee so that I could have the same courtesy, professional courtesy as the other members of this committee to contribute beforehand, not to have to get the item when everyone else gets it, but to be able to contribute to all of these underlines that are on this document. That's what I'm asking, thank you.
All right, any other comments? Okay, I want to thank the Finance Committee, two people who participated. I know that Councilmember Bowman really kind of led the charge on this, working with Councilmember Noakowski. And we think, I think we've come up with something that makes sense, because at the end of the day, I think every entity that interacts with the city has said that they would like to see a fund balance policy for our stability and to go forward. I think it's a responsible thing to do and I'm glad that we have contributed to something that I believe will assist us in re-establishing our financial stability within, or to New York and the state of New York. Okay, with that being so, Councilmember Noakowski.
Mr. Chair, just to say for the record, we do have a meeting with the administration this Thursday, so we will be sitting down with Commissioner Estrich and other members to discuss this, to, you know, to mitigate any concerns and take recommendations and move forward. So I look forward to a fruitful conversation and I will see you Thursday, Commissioner Estrich, regarding this.
Can I just?
The Majority Leader?
Um, can I just say that I have spoken with uh Councilmember Ulysses Wingo regarding the fund balance policy and to his credit, um, I just want to make for the record here, he has not objected to the concept of the fund balance policy. He's, he's had some concerns regarding the process. So, um, and certainly you're trying to make sure that all the council members are aware and have an opportunity. And I think we've even discussed this among ourselves on point. It is council members, all the council members, even the ones that don't serve on the committee, be informed regarding um any concerns, any input that they would like to have included. Um, so I just wanted to clarify that I did speak with Councilmember Ulysses and his concern was process, not necessarily the concept of the fund balance policy. Thank you.
Any other comments? Councilmember Wingo?
Thank you. Um, this meeting on Thursday, again, I'd hate to have to find out about meetings uh that we're having about such substantive uh policy, wouldn't everyone else find out about it? But what time and where will we be meeting? Is this going to be a Zoom meeting? Is this going to be an in-person meeting? What time and where will this meeting be?
Councilmember Noakowski?
I will send that uh those details in the logistics to in an email. It was the sponsors of the the ordinance that were, that had the meeting with the administration, but as a member of the Finance Committee, I will send you that logistical information to attend.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Mitch Noakowski.
Okay, Council President Pritchett?
Yeah, I just want to remind you all that um when you are meeting about the number of council members that can be together and if there's going to be uh five council members, it must be broadcast to the public.
Thank you, Council President. Okay, any other comments? Okay, motion to table?
Motion to table.
Seconded by Councilmember Noakowski. Any other items? I believe none.
No, no further items, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, seconded by Council President Pritchett.